Hold public hearing and adopt resolutions approving 2018-19 operating and 2018 through '23 capital improvement program budget and approving city appropriations GAN limit for 2018-19.
City manager Jackson. And team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. And maybe I'll just start where you left off with team. I'd like to first highlight and recognize the fact that this budget doesn't come together overnight and it doesn't come together without the deliberate and collaborative work effort by many people in our organization. All of our departments contributed a great deal of time and effort to their individual presentations, both written into the proposed budget as well as delivered orally to you at our three budget study sessions. The two ladies seated to my right are our A-team with our finance department, working under the able guidance of interim finance director Jim O'Leary, who could not be here tonight, Darlene Wong and Esther Garbabez Fernandez. I only minorly massacred her name. Again, this is an opportunity for us to think not only about the financial proposals that we're making to the city council to support programs and services, but to detail and articulate the work program that is proposed to be pursued over the next 12 months. Again, the budget is not only a plan for resource allocations to support daily operations and capital projects delivered through the city, but it is an articulation of the vision of where San Bruno is going and how is it going to get there. We do this every year and we appreciate the time and attention that the city council devotes, not only to reviewing what is a weighty document, but your time and your participation in the various study sessions and other meetings that go into the development of this work program and the financial resource proposals. One of the first things that we do when we prepare the budget is to look backwards a little bit and to highlight, for the purposes of the city council's understanding, as well as that of the public, to some of the more major significant accomplishments of the prior year that last year's budget represented in the work program and that were accomplished. I won't read all of these, but I'll highlight a couple of them. You can see them on the slide behind me. This year represents one step closer to full and final completion of what has been a massive undertaking to rebuild the Crestmore neighborhood, not only to restore and repair the damaged areas of that neighborhood, but also to build what is essentially, from an infrastructure standpoint, an entirely new state-of-the-art neighborhood that will be an example of what new infrastructure can do and a shining demonstration of this community's resilience and its recovery from disaster that occurred in 2010. Secondly, you'll hear tonight, so I won't go into great detail right now, but the opportunity to begin the very exciting process of planning for our new recreation center and aquatic center with the completion of the conceptual design that you will hear about tonight. And then lastly, for my comments on this topic, we've seen major progress over this past year with much more to come in building out our transit corridor vision for the future. We have projects now coming out of the ground, and as the council knows, this is a long and sometimes complicated process, but we have tangible demonstration of what the future is beginning to shape up in terms of its physical presence in our downtown and commercial corridors of San Bruno. As we build the budget, it's also an opportunity to look carefully at not only the individual work program recommendations and proposals in the budget, but also to link those to the city council's established overarching priorities for the city's work program on a multi-year basis. And while this information is probably familiar, it's because these objectives, having been previously established, continue to guide, direct, and to provide a framework for the city's work program delivered by all of our operating departments. Diving a little bit into the budget itself, we spend a fair amount of time on our general fund. The general fund is that portion of our budget funded primarily by taxes and a variety of other revenues that are detailed on this page. This is the portion of our budget that funds all of our public safety, our community service, our administrative operations that are the core of the service delivery through our operating departments. As you see in this chart, the revenues that are proposed to total $45,610,000 over the coming year are comprised of a relatively diverse number of sources, which is a good thing because that gives a little bit of cushion to economic or other downturns that may affect one or two revenue sources but don't have a broad across-board impact. You'll also see that the revenues have stayed relatively flat, although there are two categories that I would highlight that are showing some amount of growth. First of all, in departmental revenues, and I think that this area, although a relatively small-ish proportion of overall revenues, is one that we pay close attention to because it is one that we can manage and control in a more deliberate, direct way than some of the other resources that come to us through formulas that are developed by others. Every year, the city council takes the time to review our master fee schedule, and that's one of the key actions that assists us in making sure that our departmental revenues stay timely and that they are set at an amount that is reasonable to recover costs for individual delivery of service. In our taxes area, and again, I think as the council is aware, this $30 million is comprised of a variety of different individual revenue sources, including transient occupancy or hotel motel tax, sales tax, and property tax being the largest category. We're not seeing a great deal of growth in those categories that is projected for the coming year, but what we are seeing is a gradual uptick, we hope, and one of the key strategies behind the transit corridor plan is growth in property tax revenues, and we are seeing growth in that category, and we expect to continue to see that potentially at an increasing pace as development continues to be active within the community. On the expenditure side, you'll see again that in most areas, and we've presented on the next slide here, the general fund operating budget by category, by departmental category, you'll see that in many of our departmental operations, cost control initiatives that went into the development of the budget were successful in containing or even reducing costs at or below the levels of the prior year. In some cases where costs have increased, they are primarily due to the costs associated with our largest category of expenditures across all departments, which is employee costs. Overall, our budget is comprised at the level of 70 percent, our operating budget is 70 percent comprised of costs associated with staff. Staff-delivered services is our product, so we're a service organization, so that is not surprising, but as you can imagine, then increases to employee costs has a disproportionate effect than on the overall expenditure levels of the organization. What you see here, however, and as the city council is aware, the category of staff costs or employee costs has increased in the salary category by 3 percent over the prior year and in the retirement benefits category, which represents organization-wide an average of 33 percent of salaries. That category has increased by significantly more than 3 percent over the past year. But if you go to the last number in the total column, change in budget over the prior year, our total budget has increased by only 3 percent. So I mentioned that while employee costs have increased by a bit more than 3 percent, overall, our total operating expenses have increased by only 3 percent, which means that expenditure controls integrated into this budget have been effective in containing all costs, but in particular, where we can cut on supplies and professional services and equipment, non-personnel categories, we have done that, I would say, with reasonable success. Just a little bit more on expenditure controls. This is an important part of how we put the budget together, and this slide reviews some of the most important techniques that we use, both in developing the budget as well as in our day-to-day expenditures of budgeted resources. In particular, we have strict policies that control the amount of expenditure authority that each level of staff in our organization has. The city council approves expenditures over $25,000 and liability and workers' compensation claims over that same amount. We've spent a fair amount of time in previous budget discussions talking about one of the things that has given us a favorable budget balancing tool in prior years and again in this year, and I'll discuss that a little bit more in a moment, is salary savings from employee positions that remain vacant for some period of time during the year. Now, while we are not currently in a situation of a mandated freeze of vacant positions, in other words, the budget is not being controlled by positions that are authorized but cannot be filled, a part of our daily operational program is to carefully evaluate any time we have an employee position vacancy, whether or not that position can be, whether those duties and responsibilities can be handled in a different way, even for a temporary or even for a permanent period of time. And there is always a period of time where the position remains vacant during recruitment. So we typically end every year with a surplus, if you will. At this time so far, 1718 budget, as you'll see in a moment, ends with a positive amount of revenues over expenditures, and that goes directly to these expenditure controls and in particular salary savings that result from prudent and strong management of positions and salaries. Summarizing the general fund, and this is a presentation I've alluded to a couple of times in the comments that I've just made. If you look at the 2017-18 estimated actual column in the middle of this slide, you see that both revenues have come in or are estimated by June 30th of this year to come in just above budgeted revenues for the current 2017-18 fiscal year, and you see that expenditures are estimated to be realized at an amount that is significantly less than the amounts that were budgeted. Again, touching back to the expenditure control mechanisms that we use and reflecting in large measure salary savings that have occurred over the prior year. What you see for the current year, in the 2018, or I'm sorry, in the coming year, in the 2018-19 proposed budget column, is that in fact expenditures are proposed at an amount that exceeds ongoing projected revenues in the total amount of expenditures over revenues of $1.3 million. That gap, if you will, is prudently balanced with a use of prior year ending fund balance as well as the, I'm sorry, is the beginning fund balance as well as a prudent use of general fund fund balance. I want to call your attention to another item on this chart, and that is the proposed transfer from the general fund reserve. We talked about this at the budget study sessions. This is $500,000 that we anticipated would be lost in sales tax revenues during the coming year due to the closure of a major business enterprise in our community. More recent information has suggested that we will not have that experience. In fact, that business has been purchased by another owner and is actually very quickly back up and in operation. So we've amended the resolution that you have in front of you tonight, and you will see that the $500,000 that we proposed to take out of the reserves to backfill the expected loss in sales tax, we believe is no longer necessary. So the budget that we're asking you to approve tonight will include restoration of $500,000 into proposed sales tax revenues and the elimination of this proposed transfer. I think that's good news. Moving to reserve funds, similarly, this slide has not yet been updated to reflect the restoration, if you will, of the proposed transfer. So where you see the general fund reserve, 25 percent of budget expenditures, the $11.592 million represents just slightly less than 25 percent because we were proposing to take $500,000 out of the reserve fund at 24.6 percent. Restoring that $500,000 will replenish us to the full 25 percent balance that is the existing and continuing city council policy. Just another word about the reserve funds. This is a policy that was adopted by the city council approximately seven or eight years ago now that has served this city extremely well and has provided the, has demonstrated your prudent financial management strategies, but it has also proved to provide exactly what reserved funds are intended to be available for, and that is a necessary use for unanticipated and otherwise emergency types of situations. We certainly are no stranger to emergencies in San Bruno, and the proposal to transfer revenues to backfill sales tax is but one example of the kind of thing that can occur. So again, we're happy to report replenishment of that general fund reserve amount. I'll mention one other aspect of this slide, and that is the general fund capital reserve. As we've talked about at some length in the study sessions that occurred over the past two and a half weeks, this reserve, although it's called a reserve, it is intended to be used to provide necessary funding to make sure that capital projects that need to be completed are adequately funded. This reserve is experiencing a bit of a problem, and I call this to the city council's attention as something that probably doesn't need to be addressed in an urgent manner during the coming year, but will be a topic that the city council will need to focus on particularly in coming years as we continue to need to utilize general fund capital reserves for a variety of different kinds of important projects that don't have any other funding source other than the general fund, which is primarily our facility-related projects. But this amount, the $8 million as the ending balance, includes a $6 million amount that we recently received as a result of an additional penalty fine levied against PG&E by the California Public Utilities Commission. And that amount, as the capital budget indicates, has been designated by prior city council discussion to replace fire station number 52. What you see by the end of our projections for the end of 2018-19 show that balance dipping a bit below $6 million, which means that we will need to watch that fund very carefully in order to be able both to fund station 52 as well as deal with the variety of different facility-related needs that come up during the year that draw upon that capital reserve. So very quickly, I'm going to turn to the business-type operations of the city, and as the council is aware, we have a variety of what we call enterprise funds. These funds are fully funded by ratepayer or other designated revenues and are not funded by taxes in the manner that the general fund derives its resources. The water fund first, and as the city council is aware, we did a financing earlier this year that was intended to bring additional revenues into both our water and our wastewater fund at an early stage in order that we could complete capital projects. That financing, as well as ratepayer revenues, is generating total operating revenues this year of $15,742,000. Our operating expenditures are substantially less than that, and that is entirely per plan, leaving $6,500,000 as revenue that will be put into the capital program in order to complete a variety of different important projects. We'll talk about the CIP in just a minute, but as the council is aware, we're continuing to pursue a very aggressive program to rebuild our water and our wastewater infrastructure, and that will continue to be a primary focus of the work program over the coming year. In the wastewater enterprise, the story is very similar. Ratepayer revenues, including the rate increases that were approved by the city council as a five-year program last year, will generate operating revenues along with the financing revenues to cover both operating expenditures as well as $9 million to be included in the capital budget to cover capital projects. Moving along to the cable enterprise fund, unfortunately, as the council is aware, we have a substantially different story in our cable enterprise. That enterprise is continuing to show a deficit that has accrued over a number of years during which capital expenditures, combined with operating expenditures, have exceeded available ratepayer revenues. That deficit is shown in our budget, even with prudent management operations and cost containment strategies that are applied both to our general fund and equally to our enterprise funds. That deficit will be increased by $130,000 in operations this year and by $1.1 million in capital and other expenses. Moving to the capital improvement program, this slide simply summarizes the project funding in the total amount for 2018-19, and I'll move to a little bit of a display of the projects that will be pursued this year at that level. You'll see that our water and wastewater enterprise projects are the lion's share of our capital work program as well as our capital expenditures. And we point out one other aspect on this slide. If you go to the total five-year program, and as the council is aware, we develop a one-year budget and work program and a five-year advance review of projects that are anticipated to be completed over that five-year planning period. You'll see that in the parks and facilities category, that is the single largest category of anticipated expenditures over the five-year program. That, again, our facilities, infrastructure, if you will, is an area of significant concern in that our projects outpace our available general fund revenues, and many of these projects actually, many of the necessary projects actually are shown in our five-year CIP as unfunded. So continuing to focus on necessary improvements and potential replacements of our facility infrastructure remains a topic that will require attention over the next several years. The next two slides just give a little bit of perspective about the massive The next two slides just give a little bit of perspective about the massive and very important number and type of projects that have been completed over the past year. So starting with study and design projects, you can see that in this area, both in our water and wastewater enterprises as well as elsewhere, with stormwater projects as well as street and other projects, we have completed really a truly amazing amount of capital and infrastructure repair and improvements, or planning for capital repair and improvements. Our next slide shows over the past year, we completed and delivered a number of extremely important capital projects, including the San Mateo Avenue Water and Sewer Replacement Project that was just very recently completed, pedestrian crosswalk improvements, replacement of our city park restrooms, replacement of the streetlight circuitry in our Mills Park subdivision, as well as improvements to this building, our beautiful new deck, and the work that was done to repair the box culvert that was damaged on Masson Avenue. So this is just, just to highlight that although it's, it is something that we see around town, sometimes we don't give enough attention to the really truly impressive amount of work that is being done to situate our community physically and operationally into the long-term future. Continuing that work program for the coming year, we have a large number of construction and design projects that will be delivered. I will highlight just a couple of those. In the water enterprise, having completed, a couple of years ago, having completed the tank on Skyline, what's it, Tank Number Three, up near Skyline Boulevard, we're turning our attention to completion of another of our storage tanks on Cunningham Drive. We will be doing a great deal of work in the areas east of El Camino, in the areas we call Avenues 1-1 and 1-2. I would refer you to our printed budget and our, which is also available online to get some perspective about exactly where that is, but we will be doing a complete replacement of both water and sewer mains throughout those neighborhoods. Among, they are among the oldest in our community, and we are moving strategically through the city, starting with the oldest and moving to those areas where we have newer infrastructure or less old infrastructure that has historically caused fewer problems. As I mentioned before, the Recreation and Aquatic Center will move into the actual construction design phase. We look forward to beginning work on replacement of Station 52, and we are very proud to be anticipating full completion and delivery of two brand-new parks for our community during the coming year. One in the Crestmore neighborhood that will be completed late summer, early fall, as part of the full and final completion of the infrastructure reconstruction in that neighborhood and on Florida Avenue at the, on the property that the city council purchased a number of years ago with the hope of designing and delivering a park. We will finally see that actually built and open for public use and enjoyment. As the last part of my presentation, and as we do every year, the budget is put together both with a eye towards continuation of all existing programs and services at their existing levels. That's what we call the base budget, and that's the information that I talked about, both in our enterprise funds, in our operating, both for our enterprise funds as well as for our general fund. Our operating budget includes all of the things that have been previously approved by the city council and expected by our residents at the existing levels of service. Each year, we also look to the future and identify unmet needs that really do need attention and propose to the city council certain, what we call, service enhancement proposals that would allow us to expand operations and services and/or perform them more effectively, more efficiently with an additional limited allocation of resources. I won't go through these in detail. We've spent a fair amount of time on these at the budget study sessions, but call them out for your attention because when we present the budget to you, we're asking you to consider both the base budget as well as the supplemental enhancements, and then again, also the capital improvement program. So you're looking at three different bundles as part of the action to approve the budget. You'll see that the, on the previous slide, we've shown the ongoing service enhancements. The next slide shows one-time service enhancements. For the most part, we're proposing that prior-year fund balance be used to fund the ongoing costs and the one-time costs that will not recur. It can also be reasonably covered with use of the prior-year fund balance. All of this is detailed in more specific terms in the budget that you previously received. And again, for members of the public who might be interested, it is available on the city website. Summary of some of the significant points of the budget are, is provided in the city manager's letter, which is also provided on the website and in the bound copy. Before you, we've prepared a resolution tonight that would allow you to adopt the budget as proposed, and provided to you tonight with highlighted sections is the change that I, is it, that I mentioned earlier with the $500,000 no longer needing to be brought in from reserves, but showing as a increase to projected sales tax revenues. And we've made some clarification cleanup from the resolution that was originally in your packet to show actual dollar amounts so that you can compare the budget document to the resolution and find the exact same numbers. The resolution that was included in your agenda packet rounded those numbers to the nearest $100, nearest $1,000. With that, I'm happy to take any city council questions, and we have department directors and finance staff available to take any specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. This is also a public hearing, but before, does council have any immediate questions want to ask staff before we open the public hearing? All right. If there's anybody, we have no speaker cards, so is there anybody here from the public who wanted to speak in regards to the budget or the CIP? If not, we go ahead and close the public hearing. You'll be precluded from speaking at it at a later time. So last call for anybody on this topic. Action from council?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Back to council for discussion and our questions of staff. Anyone?
Through the chair?
Irene.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank staff, all staff. I know going through budgets and doing this while you're also doing your regular work is a monumental task, so I do thank you. I have just a couple of comments. Within the document itself, there's reference to the gas tax, and I know that some of these funds and some of the future funds will be coming from SB, from Senate Bill 1. I think it needs to be pulled separately so that the public can know that that money is new money and that it, that that is where it's coming from. There'll be a referendum of that bill in the November ballot, and I'm hoping that people who understand what that money is going for will make an educated vote. So I hope people understand it's only a 12-cent-per-gallon increase, and half of the money, approximately $1.5 billion, goes to local streets and roads, goes right back to the community, and I believe that that increases our ability to do streets by a million, is it roughly a million dollars a year, which is a tremendous amount of money. So I just hope we can do that in the final published document. The other thing I want to ask you about is on page 150, oh, no, wrong page, sorry. There's a reference, and I had it here, there's a reference to streetscaping for the city hall.
Can you tell me again which page?
Pardon me?
Which page?
That's the one I'm trying to remember. Hold on just a second. I had the other one noted. Here it is. Okay. So on page, well, it's in capital improvements under parking, or parking facilities, it's the, they're not really numbered, one, two, three, fourth page, and it says civic center facility improvements. It's project number 83885. Page 37. One, two, three. I'm sorry, it's the third piece of paper, and it's on the backside of that.
Right.
Oh, mine is obscured by the, the hole punch. So, okay, thank you. Anyway, this has, it talks about doing the landscaping along Linden Avenue into a drought-tolerant demonstration garden, and I know we've talked about doing that for several years now, but I also noticed that there's not enough money left in that account to actually do the garden, so I'm wondering what happened.
So I believe that this amount was intended for the design, and if it is council's pleasure, we would relook at that and bring that back to you as a budget amendment to allow for actual construction.
Okay. So.
Does that work?
It works for me. So the planning is going to go forward, and then we'll be looking at what the plan actually tells us.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. Everybody's pausing. Marty?
So I've struggled with this budget. I understand as a former employee that how does the council expect us to do our jobs if we don't have the staff to do our work? How at that time, I believe staff hadn't received a raise in six years, and since then, the council has been able to raise the salaries of all of our personnel up to market, more or less. And in doing that, there's costs. We currently have seen an increase in our unfunded pension liabilities of $7.5 million over the last year. This budget has no answer for that. This past year, we drew down for $4.6 million of our reserves. That was 17%. So if you imagine if you had your reserves at home and you drew down close to 20% of it, I think you got to think about whether or not, how you're going to be spending your money for that following year. We don't have a plan yet to how to increase our revenues. We've talked about it, but we have no set plan. So at this point, I understand we have to pass a budget. However, I'm really having a hard time thinking I can vote for that when I see that we're kicking the can down the road. In two years, I believe, and I'll ask staff to confirm this, our finance director, I believe, said in 2021, that budget will have to make up $5 million in employee salaries and CalPERS contributions. So going forward now, as we're getting a new city manager, I feel if we approve this budget with the enhancements, we're kind of having less flexibility on somebody new to come in and maybe tweak something here or there. So I like to hear my colleagues' thoughts before I make my final decision, and we didn't have any comments from the public. I was hoping to hear from them too, because there is no, I guess my question for staff here would be, if we decide to have a residential parking permit program, how do we pay for that additional enforcement if it's not in this budget? Is there, how would that work?
You would have to amend the budget and add resources to hire staff to produce the enforcement that was necessary. You may be able to anticipate some additional revenues, but you wouldn't have those revenues at the outset, so those resources would need to come from the reserve or the prior-year fund balance.
So what I'm hearing from my community is, is the parking, is additional enforcement. I'm not hearing, or at least I haven't heard in two-plus years from people saying, hey, you know what? It took me too long to get a permit to fix something at my house. It took too long to, I waited too long to get a permit. Now, there's a planning side of things that when somebody submits a set of plans to remodel or whatever, there's a certain amount of time that that's going to take depending on the quality of the plans that get turned in. But I just wanted to make a note of that. I think my recommendation to help with streamlining some of that is, is to start a more of a, if you need to come in and talk about a major permit, then make an appointment. When you make an appointment, the time's reserved, the planner could be ready for it, anticipate that work instead of somebody just showing up to the counter and then saying, hey, I want to talk about an addition. Well, that person's not here right now, but if we get to more of a, you call it in, you schedule a permit, I think that would take off some of the pressure off of the community development counter, I'm sorry, the building permit counter into processing those permits. But those are my comments for now, and I'd just like to hear what my other, what my colleagues think.
Comments or questions from council? Michael. I just didn't see the light, sorry.
Excuse me. I just want to ask clarification from councilmember.
I just want to ask clarification from councilmember Medina. Thank you. I apologize. Are you talking about the general fund capital improvement reserves that you, that we drew down $4 million from? Is that the fund you're talking about?
Yeah. The slide that was up there, there were four different funds, I believe, and then you add the total of the...
Mike.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can you find that slide, please? That's where, if you add those up, those are $4 million.
Okay. But that particular fund was set up to do exactly what it did. It wasn't set up just to sit there. To say it was drawn down is a correct statement, but the purpose that it was drawn down for were things that we, as a counsel, approved of. So, I think you're giving a, I don't know.
What I'm doing, I'm stating the fact that we're, we drew it down. And if it wasn't for $6 million of one-time funds from PG&E that are included in that, is that correct? The $6 million one-time funds were placed in the general fund reserve?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, the general fund capital reserve.
Right, right, right. But I'm just talking about the total drawdown. The point is, we're not dealing with the problem. We're kicking the problem down the road in that we don't have the $5 million two years from now to pay for the additional salary and pension cost, or CalPERS. Right?
Okay. But you're mixing up funds.
Okay. Let me clarify since you asked me the question. I'm pointing out a fact that yes, the money is supposed to be there. It's great that it was there. It's wonderful that it was there. But it's still that, it is now not there. And it was 3.2 and 1.5. So, something's going to come up. It does every year. We're going to have to do something, whether it's a electrical system that goes out, or it's another storm drain that goes out, or whatever it is. It's just, it's my concern that, yes, we're spending a lot. And it's one-time funds, Irene, $6 million. If it wasn't for that $6 million, I mean, we'd be in way worse shape.
I'm not disputing that. It's, it's one-time funds, it's funds put aside for the purpose of spending it on capital things. It's like putting money aside for your, you know, in your own house to replace your roof at some point, or to replace your car, or whatever it is. That is separate from your day-to-day buying groceries, paying the utility bill money. It's a, I just think you're giving a kind of a false impression about where we are financially.
I haven't said anything false. Everything I said is factual.
I did not, I did not say what you said was false. I said the impression you were giving is that we had this money and that it's just gone.
No, we spent it.
Yes, we, I know we spent it, but we spent it on capital improvements that it was intended to be spent on, and we, the counsel, approved them. It wasn't money that was just sitting there and then suddenly it's gone. But, okay. I'll stop now.
Okay. Vice Mayor has a comment or question?
I think the concern, and the concern that I have as well, and I'll make the same comment, is that we have reserve funds. We need to figure out a way to, what's the process to replenish those? So, point taken that their funds are there, money was taken away, and we wouldn't have spent the money, had enough in there. So, did we spend it because we didn't have it? No, we spent it because we had it, because funds were put in there as a reserve. Great. Here's these funds, let's go replace the roof, let's go replace the fence. So, I think to councilmember O'Connell, I agree. We didn't take them away that wasn't there. We had it, we planned on having it there, and we planned on using it for a project that was needed. I think that the consensus that I heard, and I heard at the study session, is what's the plan for replenishing these funds? And that's probably where you need to, the direction we need to go is, when we're just barely getting by with our budgets, where's the extra money to put back into these funds? Right? If we didn't get the $6 million from PG&E, if we didn't get the money from here, how are we going to build those up? So, I think that, that point, if I had to help clarify anything.
And the only thing I would say is that when I got on this council, the reserves were almost not there.
Yes.
That we didn't have it. Was one of my major concerns. There was a slide that was up on the Crestmore Hill. It took out a couple of houses. City, if my memory and history is correct, when I was on staff, had to pay for those. So, when I got in here, and other colleagues, it's not just me, there was really no reserves, period, in an emergency. In the 2010 explosion, had it not been for the settlement and restitution, had it not been for other aspects, when we have $3 million that sit in a disaster fund right now that are on the books, just for an emergency. And we then had to establish a policy just because the reserves were getting too high. And it was, okay, well, do you want to legislate, let it keep growing, or do you put it back into the system? Do you put it back into the infrastructure? Do you make repairs? It is fair that anything that comes out of that comes before this council, and it's asked for and approved. So, it's not to say, you know, we're not making ends meet. Now, we're going to have to dip into our savings. It is about a project that comes up, or it's something that's necessary, that is there for that. So, I think for the historical perspective, where we were and where we are are night and day. We never had a policy because there wasn't a need for a policy to have even percentages. And what happens when it reaches the top, which then it rolls over? The surpluses that we now do as carryovers into the next budget to help balance, those carryovers were what would go into the reserves, which had, which had happened for many times. But as we know, we're also lowering the cable enterprise. So, it's down to 375,000, which was up to almost a million. So, you know, we're also making sure that that enterprise kind of stands alone as the others do. So, I think also it is best to give a whole global picture of the history of it and not just snapshot.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I totally acknowledge that. I think it was great that we set up reserves. I'm just making a point that with that, with those expenditures and with the older city, we have $9 million in streetlights that we need to replace, identified currently. Is that correct, city manager?
I'm not sure if you're talking about the streetlight poles or...
Right.
Regulated output systems.
The streetlight poles.
I'm not remembering right offhand. I believe that cost was in the $3 million range? I mean, I think there's, it's a fair statement that we have many unmet needs. And I think it's also a fair statement that the city councils and staff's prudent management of the resources that the city has, has situated us with reserve funds that are important to the fiscal stability of the city and available for prudent use. And as the council has pointed out, the capital reserve, and as I pointed out in my comments, the capital reserve is an area that requires attention because the ability to replenish that account that is intended to be spent is something that is tighter than it has been in private, in prior years.
Right.
I'm sorry. And Michael was about to talk and then I got sidetracked. Michael wants it over all done. Okay. Michael. Thank you for your patience.
Sure, sure. This is, I mean, this is an interesting discussion. There are so many moving parts here. It's, it is hard to keep track of everything that's going on. I share councilmember Medina's concerns about how fragile our budget seems to be. And we're in a relatively prosperous time in the economy, and our budget is barely showing a 5 percent uptick, I think. So, it's, it's kind of, it's sputtering along. And I commend staff on the budget that they presented, that they were able to hold it to a 3 percent increase. I think really does show the amount of effort that went into sharpening those pencils and making sure that we're containing these things. So, you know, I am concerned about the growth that councilmember Medina talked about. We do need to grow this. And so, while I'm somewhat comfortable with the base budget that was proposed, I think the supplementals are, they're problematic to me because we're pretty, we're banking on having a surplus in the next year in order to cover those. And just looking at the historic, you know, how that ends up playing out, it could be anywhere from, I'm looking 15, 16 actuals, it was, you know, $40,000 in surplus. Following year, it was a million, and then it was negative $2 million. So, it's all over the place. So, without any real structure around how we fund that, I'm a little uncomfortable with those. And I know that all of those, I also know that staff spent a lot of time paring down that list, and I know that what you're asking for is necessary. I'm just concerned about our ability to pay for it once we commit to it. So, I'm definitely hesitant about that. We have a subcommittee that's been working on some new income sources. So, what I would recommend that we do tonight is approve the base budget and then revisit any of the supplemental requests after we have an opportunity to look at some future funding sources that could guarantee our ability to pay for those.
Laura?
Thank you. So, I ditto some of the council comments as well. First of all, again, thank you from staff. This is a difficult process. This is a tedious process. It's a challenging process. And I appreciate that all departments adhering to the really control of containing our costs. So, my concerns are as such as some of the council members have already pointed out. Number one, you know, the anticipated decrease in sales tax of $148,000 going forward into of last year and looking at another $300,000 this coming year. You know, sales tax, councilmember Salazar just mentioned that we're in a prosperous economy, but yet, and we're, I'm spending more. I know I spend more at the stores and spend more in San Bruno, but our sales tax is just doing the opposite. Or if you look over the last 10 years, it's just been flat. And that's, you know, revenue source for us. Full and part-time staff representing 50 percent of all of our expenditures. The PERS, I mean, if you're not familiar with PERS, you know, unfortunately, the economy took a nosedive. There were some poor investments, living longer, and so, PERS is costing us 33 percent of the salaries. And we're looking at an increase of 45 percent at 2021. And Marty, your numbers were correct in that salaries, including retirement benefits, will increase by $5 million in 2020, 2021. That's a tremendous number. Where are we going to pull out $5 million when we're just barely getting by today? As we discussed, what's the plan to replenish funds? So, I have concerns about the supplementals as well. And I am also in support of the, of the, I think I'm in favor, I think I ditto, echo councilmember Salazar's comments as well. So, I'd like to have more discussion on the supplemental expenditures.
Any other comments from staff? I mean, sorry, apologize. From counsel? Nope?
Okay. So, what I have heard is we could take this in a couple of stages, which we have done before. We could take it as to where, and city attorney, city manager, where we approve the 218, 219 general fund budget. We approve all of that, then we look at the supplementals and take those independently? Correct?
Yes. So, the resolution in front of you is prepared to approve the entire budget, the base budget, as well as the supplemental budget, the operating and the capital. We can amend the budget according to your action. So, if you're, if you're asking, can you approve the base budget and defer consideration of the supplemental budget? The answer is yes. We would do so by noting your action and amending the resolution to match your action.
This is just to get us through stages, and I know we've taken the supplementals. I know we were going back and forth whether to call lead or a one-time or, you know. So, we have done that. So, we can go ahead if we have a consensus of the council to introduce the resolution amended, but to have the base budget as well as the CIP approved, however, amending that the supplementals be brought back or a separate discussion. Am I correct? Is that all right, city attorney, city clerk, city manager? Got three yeses. Okay. That's good. So, what's the council's desire?
Well, can we break it, can we break down some of these, like, look at one-time cost and see if we can get a consensus on those versus ongoing costs? Do we go through these one at a time?
It's up to us, but I mean, if we want to take care of the base budget first, get that off the table, city attorney, is that okay?
Yes, you can certainly take the base budget first, make a motion on that. We'll prepare resolutions afterward to conform with the city council's action.
Okay. Vice mayor, are we saying that you would think of doing the base budget, CIP, and one-time enhancements?
Yes.
Okay. It's a suggestion? Comments?
Just, there's a few other items still on the agenda that I don't want to keep everybody here on. And I think if we start picking these apart, it's going to, it's going to take some time. So, I would prefer to maybe just defer the whole block.
The enhancements.
And enhancements for another, for another session.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Sure.
I'm ready to introduce a resolution to approve the basic budget.
Base budget.
Base budget.
And CIP.
And CIP.
With the amendment that the enhancements comes back.
Yeah. And removing the enhancements.
And removing the enhancements.
Does that work? Okay. So, you can introduce the resolution with that amendment.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Okay. So, city manager?
We have one more action associated with the budget. That's the GAN limit.
Yes, please go ahead.
Is it, is it, okay? The, every year with the adoption of the budget, we also ask your action as required by state law to approve a GAN limit, as it's known, under state law. Propositions 4 and 111 in 1978 established a limit on the amount of appropriations of tax-generated proceeds that a local agency can receive and spend each year. The limit is based on actual appropriations in the 1978, '79 fiscal year, and then those amounts are escalated by population and CPI and other, other growth factors. So, the resolution that you have in front of you this evening calculates the GAN limit as required by state law. And what you can see is that, as has been the past, has been the case in the past, this city has come in well under its GAN limit. In other words, approved appropriations or proposed appropriations in the budget are significantly less than the GAN limit would allow us to appropriate and spend. So, with that, the separate resolution is in your pocket, and we would ask your action to approve that tonight as well.
Any questions of staff? Any comments or questions from the audience on this? Okay. Any action from counsel?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.